Here. And proof of publication?
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on June 30th, 2021, July 18th, 2021, and July 21st, 2021.
Thank you very much. For anybody who plans to give testimony today, this would be a good time to stand, raise your right hand, and pledge. Repeat.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give today as the truth of hope you've got?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to start at this time by explaining our role as the Planning Commission. We serve as a local planning agency. The Planning Commission holds public hearings and transmits to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, Land Development Code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, the final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any comp plan amendment, land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. Those dates are available. And I don't think we have any minutes, right?
No, that's correct.
Okay. We have... What we're going to go through today is we're going to go through continuances, consent agenda, and regular items, as they appear on the agenda. And we'll go through those items, and then as we read them off, if there's anybody here that has an objection, please raise your hand, and we'll take it off to be heard today. Otherwise, it'll stay on consent, for example, or it will be continued, and you'll be advised of a future date. Those things that remain on consent will be all voted on at one time and approved. And then if there are any regular items left on the agenda, well, those will all be open for discussion. Do we have anybody to speak about anything that's not on the agenda today? Denise? The public hearing session?
We do have... We do have someone on the... That is a call-in user, so we're not sure who that call-in user is. Can we give an opportunity to see if that person is here for a public comment?
Sure.
Item that is not associated with anything on the agenda today?
Yes, we can.
Call-in user, which... Are you here for a public comment item?
Yes.
Okay, so that's an item on the agenda. Okay, thank you so much. So, are you here for RZ 7512? Is that the number?
Um... Yeah, that's always the...
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much.
...
Are you the applicant on one of our items? Are you Ms. Joni Hooks?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you so much. You're on a regular... On a consent item. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, so there's no one here to speak to anything not on the agenda?
Sorry about that. The name is not stated, so we wanted to make sure.
No, no, that's fine. That's great. Good we did that. So, let's then move on to the regular items.
Okay, great. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. The first item is PC 1, PDD 217550. It's a zoning amendment for Acorn 54 LLC, Acorn MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development District. And it's from an MPUD to a C2. Sorry about that. And the request is for a continuance to the November 4th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Date City.
Okay, is the applicant present?
The applicant is physically present.
Anyone here to object? No, I don't see anyone.
And also to mention that there has... There's no one signed up on WebEx to speak on this item either.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve the continuance request?
So moved.
Second.
And we have a second? Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Following item is PC 2, PDD 25217540. It's a zoning amendment, Lake Como Co-op, for a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District to an AR Agricultural Residential District. And this comes here with a recommendation to continue to a date uncertain.
All right. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
Okay. Is there anyone here to object? I see no objections.
And we also don't have anyone signed up to speak on WebEx on the item.
Okay. Does the applicant need to speak for any reason?
Ms. Will Hyde, would you like to speak for any reason?
I guess that's a no. Okay, so, do I hear a motion on the continuance request?
Moves to continue to date uncertain?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
PC 3 is PDD 217541. It's a special exception, Lake Como Co-op Inc., special exception for a 57 space travel trailer recreational vehicle park in an AR Agricultural Residential District. This also is a request for a continuance to a date uncertain.
Applicant present?
Ms. Will Hyde is virtually present.
Okay. Anyone here to object? Okay, is Ms. Will Hyde... Howie, you have a comment? Okay. Do I hear a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Following item is PC 4. It's PDD 217467, in the name of Dayflower MPUD, Dayflower JV LLC. It's a rezoning request from AR Agricultural Residential, ER Estate Residential, R1 Rural Density Residential Districts to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District for a maximum of 1,469 single-family detached homes, villas, and townhomes on approximately 1,013.67 acres. Comes here with a recommendation to continue it to a date uncertain.
All right. Is the applicant present? The applicant's present?
The applicant is virtually present, I believe, Ms. Will Hyde.
There's also somebody to raise their...
And Mr. Harden.
Okay. Is anyone here to object to the continuance? Okay. Does the applicant have any comment?
We do also have Mr. Foley on the phone to... I'm sorry, on WebEx also.
Okay.
Mr. Foley's...
Mr. Foley is a public comment. Not sure whether to object or not. Just wanted to mention that.
He said, "We don't know if he's pro or con." Okay.
That's correct.
All right, so...
Is Ms. Will Hyde in agreement with the continuance?
Is Barbara...
Can we unmute Ms. Will Hyde? Or Mr. Harden might want to come up and speak.
Okay. So, is there... If there's somebody online, let's just check and see if there want to comment.
Can we unmute Mr. Foley?
Comment, not on the project, on the continuance.
So, to be clear, Mr. Chair, if you're continuing... If staff's recommending to continue this to a date uncertain, and the applicant's in agreement with that continuance, you don't have to take any public comment at all.
Okay.
I mean, it was noticed as a continuance to a date uncertain. If everybody's in agreement on it, it's going to have to be re-noticed anyway, so there's really no point in taking any public comment.
Okay.
There'd only be a point if the applicant was not in agreement with the continuance.
Okay.
But it sounds like they are.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, PC 4, do we have a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue to date uncertain?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. All right. Motion carries.
Moving on to PC 5, which is PDD 217512. That is a zoning amendment for Two Rivers MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District. Hickory Hills Land Company rezoning from AC Agricultural District, AR Agricultural Residential District, to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow 6,400 residential dwelling units, 1,335,000 square feet of office target industry, 1,355,000 square feet of industrial, and 630,000 square feet of retail uses on approximately 3,405 acres. Comes here with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
All right.
We do have someone on WebEx for this item.
Okay, is that the applicant? Is that the applicant, Denise?
The applicants are... The applicants are virtually present... Are physically present, sorry.
All right. So, the applicant's present. Do you want to... Mr. Hobby, do you want to make a presentation, or do you want to wait to be... Find out what the other party says?
I think we'd wait, Mr. Chairman, let the other people on consent finish up, and then let the...
Just give your name and address.
Clark Hobby, Hobby &amp; Hobby, PA 109 O'Brus Street, Tampa, Florida. Haven't been sworn. Actually, yeah, I have been sworn.
Yeah.
But we would wait till after the consent agenda, and I'll wait to hear what the one lady has to say.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so who's...
Do you have to pull... That item will be pulled, then, and we'll move on to the next item, which is PC 6?
Yeah.
Great. PC 6 is PDD 217546, zoning amendment, Y Smith Properties LLC. It's for a change in zoning from C2 General Commercial District to an I1 Light Industrial Park District. Comes here with a recommendation of approval.
All right, is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Do you know objections?
And we have no one on WebEx signed up for this item.
All right. Do I hear a motion? Yeah, I was... Yeah, let's do it all at once. That's what we usually do. Okay.
Should move on to PC 7. PC 7 is PDD 217549, zoning amendment. Patrick Sullivan, change in zoning from AR Agricultural Residential District to C2 General Commercial District. Comes here with a recommendation of approval, and that's PDD 217549.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
And we don't have anyone signed up to speak on WebEx on the item.
Okay. Let's go to the next one.
PC 8 is PDD 217551, zoning amendment, Wade and Ernest Transu and Joni Hooks, for a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District and AR Agricultural Residential District to an AR Agricultural Residential District. Comes here with a recommendation of approval.
Okay.
And the applicant, Ms. Hooks, is present virtually.
All right. Is there anybody here to object? I don't see any objections.
And we have no one signed up to speak on WebEx on the item.
All right. And do I hear a motion, or do we have any questions from the base?
Motion to approve a consent agenda consisting of PC 6, PC 7, and PC 8?
Second.
You have a motion to approve the consent agenda? 6, 7, and 8? And we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Okay. So, let's go back to five.
Mr. Chair, did you want to see a presentation from staff, or did you just want to hear the objection of the applicant?
Yeah, I'd like to hear the objection. Come with the applicant responding. I think that'd be the simple approach.
Ms. Hello?
Yes.
Is it time for me to make my comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. My name is Stelsey Lum, and I've lived at 33912 Mandarin Road in Wesley Chapel since 2001. This area floods when we have an adverse event like a hurricane or tropical storm, and even sometimes, except for the monofrain, our properties go under about a foot of water when that flood occurs. There is a current investigation in progress with Pasco County that was initiated as a result of myself and my neighbors witnessing unnatural behavior of the water before Hurricane Elsa, and also because we noticed a disruption in the natural flow of the water. The natural flow, which has now been disrupted, or it seems to be disrupted, is what moves the water out of our area when it does flood. The investigation continues, but it was found at an construction site. I don't believe any zoning changes should be considered until not only this investigation is completed, but also until we see the impact that the current development will have. Both the current construction and what you're proposing here are being as building on areas that are both watershed and floodplain areas. Watershed is defined as a region or area drained by a river stream, a drainage area, and a floodplain is defined as a flat plain along the course of a stream called River that is naturally subject to flooding. I notice that in the conditions for approval, there is no requirement for a civil or stormwater engineer to complete an analysis of how filling this entire watershed and floodplain area will impact the surrounding neighborhoods. Why is this? One would think this would have to be done when we decide to fill up floodplain and floodplain area. Without such analysis, you have no way of knowing how this will impact us on Mandarin Road, where I will remind you, it already floods. I fear we will find out when we have an adverse event and our flooding gets worse, causes more damage, and the worst case scenario is a rose flood, and we have a cutoff from emergency services. In addition, with the current construction disrupting the natural flow of the floodwater, I fear any flooding will take weeks or months to go away as opposed to the normal four to seven days. It is the responsibility of the County Commission to properly plan for growth while protecting current residents. This plan indicates to me that the County Commission is not doing the proper due diligence to protect the residents who have been paying taxes and contributing to this community for decades. In addition, this development will create unmanageable traffic on Morris Bridge Road, which cannot handle the traffic that will be created by this monstrosity. This is going to create a very dangerous situation for the current residents trying to get in and out of our neighborhoods. I am sure that Morris Bridge at some time will be widened, but I am sure, based on past observations, that it will be years after the growth is already here and will come way too late. You want the growth because of the money it brings, and that is probably all you see, which I recognize, and I almost didn't attend today because I feel like it's probably a waste of my time. So, I will just leave you with these questions. How do you know that there will be no adverse flooding effects to any surrounding residences? How can you sleep at night allowing this to move forward without doing your due diligence? For a change, why not turn this area into a preservation and a municipal park or something like that? I know that's a crazy idea, but why not? Why do we have to ruin every natural area that we have?
Excuse me, Ms... Ms... I'm going to have to... Excuse me. Excuse me.
Everyone wants to move to a nice area because it's nice.
Is she not here?
Ms. Lone, your time is up.
...............
I don't believe you've been sworn. I didn't have a chance to stop you long enough to swear you in, so if you would please be sworn.
Sorry, I can't hear you?
You need to be sworn. I was trying to get your attention to get you sworn in, but I couldn't slow you down long enough to get that.
Well, I stood up and put my hand up when everyone else in person there did.
Okay.
Huh?
That's good enough.
So, you can swear me in if you want.
No, that's okay. If you say you did, then we'll take that for the truth.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah. Okay. So, Mr. Hobby, you want to come and answer those questions?
Yes, Clark Hobby again. Can you all hear me? I don't think the mic's on very loud today.
Time's up already.
Okay. Clark Hobby again. I'll try to answer a few of these questions. You all are familiar with Two Rivers. It's a very large project the county has planned for, for over a decade now. It is the largest of the three parcels that the county worked with to create a surcharge to build the 56th extension and to finance lanes 3 and 4 of the 56th extension. So, as a for instance, there's 14.8 million dollars of mobility fee surcharges from this project alone that pay back the loan that the county took out from the FDOT State Infrastructure Bank for the 56th project. So, it's definitely doing its fair share. But let me answer these questions, because I think we're all generally aware of Two Rivers, and it's a project that the county really has been planning for and wants. She... As I understood the lady speaking, she was concerned about flooding in her area. But to be clear, she lives on the west side of Morris Bridge Road, which is in the New River Basin. We're on the east side, which is in the Indian Creek Basin. So, our water doesn't go over there. Our water goes further south and then joins into the Hillsborough River, as does New River, but it's outside of her basin. So, her biggest concern, we have nothing to do with. As you all undoubtedly know, there's swift mud rules and county rules that require us to make sure that we don't flood our neighbors. We have some of the smartest engineers in the Bay Area working on this site, and I'm confident we won't flood anybody. And lastly, I'd just like to say, you know, we're providing a lot of infrastructure here, but when it comes to creating parkland, open spaces, and this kind of thing, there's a couple of important things to remember. Number one, this project, as part of this MPUD, is providing and cooperatively working with the county to create an 80-acre district park. It's one of the largest ones in the county. We're probably going to be making improvements for the county's betterment as part of a joint cooperation agreement. But moreover, if you haven't been around here for a long time, what's called the Hillsborough River State Park came out of this same landowner's property 80 years ago, and they set aside, I can't remember, it was, I think, 25,000, 30,000 acres for preservation and open space in the same area. The same landowner cut out of the same piece of property. So, there's already been a lot of open space and preservation that was occurred. And incidentally, my grandfather was working for the CCCs that built the park then, and that's the reason why I'm so aware of it. That was, I believe, in 1933. Happy to answer any other questions you have.
Clark, can you address the question about Morris Bridge Road?
Oh, Morris Bridge Road. Morris Bridge Road, also. Part of the conditions, we've worked out in agreement with the county. There's a pipeline project that the funds... The mobility fee funds from this project are going to be more or less impounded in a special account, which the county will be initially responsible for using up to $9 million to four-lane Morris Bridge Road from State Road 56 up to Chancy Road, where the current four-laning is coming down as part of the 54 project. And then the area south of 56, we're going to be making site access improvements on, but we're also dedicating a lot of right-of-way. So, if the county decides to four-lane that section in the future, it will have sufficient right-of-way. David, was there... Did that cover?
No, I just want to make sure you addressed that.
Yeah, okay. Happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions from the base?
I have a... Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
And probably not for Clark, because this doesn't impact your project, but I know this lady said she was concerned about some flooding, perhaps by some construction going on, and that the county was looking into that. Does the county have any response to that, or are you aware of any of that?
Is there any active code enforcement or stormwater enforcement action against Two Rivers?
Not Two Rivers, but I was just, in general, for this lady, if somebody's looking into...
So, I guess that's the applicant. Is there any ongoing construction on your site at all?
Not... There's none on this site. This... I can only assume that the lady is referencing construction and other projects. I don't know which ones. There's several under construction over on the west side. I don't know.
And that was my only question, was, is the county aware of any, not for Two Rivers, but for any project on the...
I've not heard any... I represent some of those home builders. I've not heard of anything like that, but, I mean, again, I think your point, Mr. Williams, is a good one, which is, I think staff should look into that and make sure that there aren't anything over there, and follow up if there's a flooding issue.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Yes, please come forward.
Yes, I live on Ameta Drive.
Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Rick Gardino, 318 Ameta Drive, and my property borders Two Rivers. And my concern is just a person. I don't know why 3,000 homes has to be. It's not enough for them. It's on one acre per home now. And as far as the water goes, it does back up from Two Rivers up across where Wiley Road is. We got a lake over to the... To the left there, as you're looking at it, and that back up to the northern end of their property. And it does backflow there. So, it's not like it doesn't happen. Granted, the lady's on the wrong side of the road, but I'm right next to her property.
Well, they have an obligation to not make your flooding situation worse. They don't have an obligation to make your flooding situation go away. That's the difference.
I can appreciate that, but once it's done, it's done.
Yeah, a little... I agree.
And if it's got a flood, I'm going to go say, "Hey, can you help me?" They're not going to talk to me.
Well, they don't have a...
In the real world, that's all. That's all.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chair, you should give the applicant another chance of rebuttal, since you have been objected.
Yeah.
Other folks who want to speak?
Before we...
Yeah.
Let's just make sure there's nobody else.
I'll sleep yourselves.
Or that lady to call?
I'm sorry, but I didn't hear what you guys said.
Give your name and address, please.
These things don't work real good. I want to echo what she said.
I need your name and address.
Oh, my name is Troy Cruz, C-R-E-W-S, 6423 Tulip, Wesley Chapel.
Thank you.
Again, I want to echo what she said. As far as the drainage, and I'm in Angus Valley, by the way, not the same area, Angus Valley, but the same problem. They're talking about putting four-lane or three-lane roads to get back in there to that property, coming through where we live. I don't have a problem with that. I don't like it, but I don't have a problem with it. Problem I got is drainage. Pasco County already don't take care of the drainage problem they got out there. And when it rains, what the little drainage we do have...
Sir, are you talking about this project or a different project?
Different project.
Because we're here to hear testimony on Two...
Yeah, we're not talking about that.
We're here... We're talking about the Two Rivers project. Sorry, do you live near this project, Two Rivers?
No. That's 7512.
Okay. We're taking testimony on this project, not Angus Valley's. That's a different area.
Thank you.
Do you have something to say about this project?
I live...
Okay.
My name is Jack Chu. I live... I reside at 310 Diana Drive. My property backs up to Two Rivers Ranch, and it's very nice. It's quiet and peaceful and everything. My biggest issue is I was diagnosed with IPF, Phytopathic Pulmonary Fibrosis. There is a flooding area back in there. I got assurances three years ago, when they started surveying and everything, that was going to be a green area. There is a lot of water that collects. I built up my property along the property line to assure that my house doesn't get flooded. My property... My house is about an $800,000 house, which is... I pay considerable taxes. I own several properties throughout Pasco County and throughout the southeast. I own several properties throughout Pasco County and throughout the southeast. I contribute to Pasco County $28,000, $30,000 a year in property taxes. My concerns are that, number one, that the construction is going to create a flooding issue with my property, that it might decrease the value of my property. It's definitely going to deny me the quiet enjoyment of my property. Of course, you're going to have to have heavy equipment, you're going to have noise, you're going to have dust, you're going to have, where they burn. Whenever they burn, that is a health issue for me especially. I just got back from Mayo Clinic, so I was able to make this meeting. I actually cut my visit up there short by two days. I just want to make sure my concerns are addressed, and someone will reach out to me and give me the assurances that I need to know that I'll be able to continue to live there in a safe and enjoyable manner. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Clark, do you have a comment?
Clark Hobby again. I think I've already answered the drainage issue, and I think we're all aware that we've got to follow the law on that. We cannot flood our neighbors. We cannot add to the volume or rate of discharge from the site from its pre-development condition to its post-development condition. I am convinced, after having watched the county plan for this project for many, many years, that it'll be a big benefit to this area, and I actually believe it'll raise property values considerably. As I said, the county's plan for this site for many years has added it to the urban service area specifically, so it would be built in an urban style and to take advantage of the utility resources that the county has there and the roadway that the county's built and needs to repay the state with the surcharges from the project. So I have, it's been as well-planned as you can. The infrastructure is actually out in advance of the development, which is what we'd all like to see. So there's a lot to like here. And just one last thing, if we were to leave it in a very low-density condition, the way one of the speakers would have proposed, we couldn't also be providing a 77-acre school site and an 80-acre park site and many of the other things that we're doing for the benefit of the county that are part of the holistic plan that's been done here. So, thank you.
All right. Any questions?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clark, you indicated that you hire a number of engineers. Are any of those engineers stormwater engineers?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay. And the land, the elevation of it, is it basically flat land?
No, there is some significant topographic change in different parts of the site. Keep in mind, it's over 3,000 acres. So there are some areas that are flat. There are, like, everything in this area has significant floodplain compensation, and the professional engineers will have to compensate for any impacts to the floodplain that occur here, the way they do on any project by building ponds and retaining water back.
Because it's flat like that, you're still, if it stayed in its current condition, there would be flooding out there, true?
I couldn't say whether it's creating a flood condition in its current condition. I mean, that's...
There could be water issues or something.
There could be flow issues.
What kind of rains we currently have?
We cannot make it worse than its current condition.
And the water, you indicated that your grandfather put his CCC back in the 30s...
Yes, sir.
Which helped create the...
Hillsborough River State Park.
Right. And most of that water, at least, in our, in the... Could there, could it be seen, I'm trying to think of word here. But I'm trying to indicate that the water would tend to flood towards the river. Is that correct, no matter how, if you left it in its natural state?
Water tends to flow towards river bodies. That's what creates the rivers and the flow for rivers. Yes, sir.
So by you developing the land, you're going to, in some ways, probably reduce flooding. It's not that, that would be a correct statement, I think, in many ways?
There may be areas that we do that, but again, that, as Mr. Girardi and other people on the planning commission know, the legal test we must meet is we can't increase the rate of discharge or the volume of discharge from the pre-development condition, which we're in now.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, that's it.
Thank you.
And I guess you'll make yourself available, Clark, if they ask other questions outside this meeting.
There's a couple hands that want to, Mr. Chair.
No, I'm sorry, you only get one bite at the apple, so. If somebody else would like to speak? Okay, we're trying to get all the questions up here before Mr. Hobby comes up, so this is the last opportunity. If you want to speak, raise your hand. No, you can't come back up. You've had your shot.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Sean Donnelly. Address is 5401 West Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 1030, Tampa 33609. As a way of introduction, I am the trustee and the owner of the property directly south of the project at issue here on the Hillsborough County side. My property runs from Morris Bridge Road about approximately halfway back, and then Hickory Hills owns from there to 301 over. Of note on this property is that there is the only existing roadway that connects 301 to Morris Bridge Road. It is a dirt road privately owned and maintained by both County Line Crossing, which is the trust that owns the property, and Hickory Hills. We've been talking a lot about here about the flooding issues, and you say that there's not an issue. I can tell you for a fact there is. TECO is in...
Excuse me, we didn't say there wasn't a flooding issue. All we said was, by developing it, they can't make it worse. It's not allowed to.
By example, TECO...
I thought you were going to switch my words around.
I didn't. I wasn't referring to what you said. However, the very southwest corner, abutting Morris Bridge Road, there is a small substation for TECO. When that was installed, there was concrete base, and then obviously the mechanisms put on top. Since then, the runoff from that has flooded my property and has come up and over the road. And that's on a small square, I don't know exactly how many square foot print that that is. However, you're talking about putting in 6,400 residential units and almost 7 million square feet of industrial and retail space. And what the plan doesn't mention anywhere in here is how much concrete that's going to be. The plan does, on page 16, allow 75% to 85% coverage of each lot that's set forth here. If this one little lot is causing flooding already on my property, what is the 75% to 85% going to do with this? Page 10 of the packet is very vague in that it says, "Developer is responsible for appropriate and sufficient drainage/retention and floodwater mitigation," but it doesn't indicate where their location is going to be. It's to be determined. For all I know, you can put all of those ponds right next to my property, and when they overflow, heck with it, I'm underwater. I've got waterfront property, that's great, but not the kind that's going to help. Am I limited to that time?
We got one minute left.
Okay. Second of all, what hasn't been mentioned yet is the additional runoff is going to result from the expansion of State Road, I'm sorry, of Morris Bridge Road from two lanes to four lanes. That fourth lane that is on the east side of Morris Bridge Road is going to directly dead-end into my property. When that happens, you're going to create a bottleneck. You're going to go from four lanes down to two lanes on Morris Bridge Road. For Pasco County, it doesn't matter, because that's only about a quarter mile to a half mile between 56 and the county line. However, from county line down to the next turnoff, which would be Cross Creek Boulevard, it's almost a mile. And then if you want to go east, you have to go all the way down to where the I-75 entrance is, and that's many miles in order to get over to 301 or to Bruce B. Downs. There's no mention of turn, lanes being installed, there's no mention of traffic lights in here, and this is going to have a tremendous effect on, well...
Be the start and wrap up.
Okay. All I was going to say is that, directly catty-cornered to this, you've got MI homes, and I know it's not in your jurisdiction, however, there are 1,900 homes over there that are right on the Pasco-Hillsborough border. When this bottleneck comes down to two lanes, you're going to impact their ingress and egress, as well as emergency response time for City of Tampa Police, Fire, and EMTs. There's...
Sir, can I ask you a question? Because I'm not clear on your comment. So I think what Mr. Hobby said is that the county's only four-laning the road from 56 north. We're not, there's not going to be any four-laning south of State Road 56. So you keep talking about the transition from four lanes to two, that transition's going to occur farther north of State Road 56, not where your property is.
I understand that, but there is reservation for the right-of-way in there that was mentioned in the packet. I don't have the specific citation.
There is, but the county has no immediate plans, nor does the developer have any plans to four-lane it south of State Road 56.
Okay. Given that, if you look at the diagram showing the concentration of use on Morris Bridge Road, you'll see that almost exclusively along Morris Bridge Road is going to be the commercial uses, stores and that kind of thing. So you're going to take all of these cars that are going to be coming up into this off of a two-lane road, and they're going to be turning off, backing up traffic. Even if it doesn't go to four lanes, all of the commercial is on that side of the road. My biggest, again, and I'm not against development, I'm not here to speak against that.
I'm being really generous with you.
I apologize. I would simply want you to know that I'm not here necessarily speaking out, but I think there are certain things that have not been adequately addressed at this point. This to-be-determined for the runoff and the stormwater and the drainage, that just isn't satisfactory. You've got a duty to the neighboring properties, and I directly abut it, and I had direct experience with even a small pad resulting in severe damage to my property. That's an unlawful taking if that happens, and you have a duty to respect that.
Well, that was done by TECO Tampa, wasn't it?
It was, but it, well, it's done in Pasco County, though.
Well, it's done in Pasco County, but, you know, TECO is out of Hillsborough County.
And I'll just make one last quick sentence, is that there was mention of a reservation of rights for future use in the event that County Line Road is extended, and my question was, has either the planning commission, the Board of County Commissioners, reached out to the City of Tampa or Hillsborough County to find out about the expansion of County Line Road? I think it would provide a tremendous amount of ingress and egress, both for the development that's coming, as well as for anyone coming up Morris Bridge Road into that traffic. It would be a way for them to get over to 301 or to Bruce B. Downs. It would also relieve a lot of the ingress and egress problems for the MI homes. So with that in mind, I just wanted to put my two cents worth in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
You're going to have to give the applicant rebuttal again. I know the dog were that we're doing this.
I'm just going to make sure I have any questions of that, of that picture.
I'm sorry, commissioners, and I'll try to keep this brief. Just for your benefit, with regard to County Line Road, we talked about this when it came to planning commission previously during the changes to the comprehensive plan and the Highway Vision Road Network, and so I'm just reminding you more than anything. So the applicant owns the property to the south in Hillsborough County that's part of a planned development project there already, and they're showing access through that site, getting all the way to 301 from Morris Bridge Road. So the way the conditions work is we'll either use that connection, and the county will require us to do so, or we have to then come back and provide the connection through this project. And there are conditions in there to ensure that we don't end up in the mess that ended up in K-Bar on the Hillsborough County side. So that's why David worked that language out with us to take care of that issue. And then, let's see, just again, for y'all's benefit, on a large project like this, it's highly unusual to think that you're going to do an access management analysis on every roadway. It's over 3,000 acres, so as with many large projects, the access management analyses will be done at the time of development, as well as the engineering. That's when we'll address all the drainage concerns and all that kind of stuff. Thank you.
Clark, I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know if it's for you or Jessica, but was this MPD submitted to our stormwater department for comments?
Yes.
Can you come up just a second?
Jessica Cole with Planning and Development Department. This project was submitted to our stormwater division for review, and they provided the standard comments that exist in our land development code pertaining to floodplain mitigation and all stormwater detention ponds that are created with the project.
So did they recommend any special conditions for this project because of historical flooding?
No, sir.
Okay, then answer my question.
Thank you. Okay. So if there's no questions on the dais, I hear our motion.
I'll make the motion to approve PC 5.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Let me carry it.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're out of here.